If Lisandro Diaz could be added to for the session. Coachella, the City Council, closed session, regular meeting. The council sitting as a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella financial authority. Coachella Education and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority Succession Agency. To the redevelopment agency, it's February 22nd. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to orders. As our city attorney do note for the record. The attendance and then I'm gonna ask council to pass resolution 2023-08. Resolution to continue fully partially virtual public meetings, is there a motion to approve resolution 2023?
Motion approved.
There's a motion, there's a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. What she carries and we want to approve of the agenda at this time, council board corporations already may announce any items being pulled. Mister city manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mister Mayor, we would like to continue item number 11. Due to the retirement of our previous city clerk. There was a transition period that a few applications were missed, they were submitted on time before the deadline. However, we want to revise the staff report and give those applications to council for their review.
Okay, so you want to. Alright, and then also I got contacted by Mister. Lee Espinoza, he wanted to see if he could bring in some boxers.
He actually called me, said he was scheduled at a time to put on the agenda, he won't be attending.
He's got a big fight tomorrow, alright, well. With that, can we get a motion to approve the agenda with the modification?
Motion approved, the agenda with the modifications.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Alright, with that. Are there any public comments on closed session items? See now, we'll go ahead and move into closed session.
Bill, welcome back. Mister city attorney, any report or items for closed session?
We have no, we have no report of access from closed session.
Automations at this moment were is a.
She won't be attending, we would like to council to read the proclamation and we'll be mailing that.
Okay, so we'll read the proclamation and military?
Yes.
Before we read the proclamation, any words from the council that you wanna?
I know that Andrea isn't here, but I hope she'll listen to our comments in the in the future. Andrea was with the city for many, many years. And she was outstanding at what she did, she made it very, very easy for us. And we took it for granted. Because now that she is gone, you know, where at least I'm feeling. That absence of hers and how much experience and knowledge that she had. Regarding the city clerk's position. And she was very rapid in her responses, if I requested any type of information. Within a few hours, she would have that information to me, so to Andrea, you're gonna be greatly missed. Thank you for all your dedication, for your time, for your experience and always being accessible to us, thank you for your service.
You know, I served two years as council member with with Andrew being here and I echo the words customer dogato. It's great to have been worked with her and and thank you for your service, if there's any more words, we'll often read the proclamation. Alright, and this.
Something I know that I'm.
Go for it, go for it.
I just got back from dropping off, I'm picking up my son. But I would like to say something because I have been working with Andrea the entire time that I was elected and. I I definitely agree with what. With council member that battle says because. I wish I would have had the opportunity to say bye to Andrea and I know that I will be able to talk to her again. But working with Andrea closely and talking to her from the very, very beginning, Andrea was the type of person that would show you love and. And care from the moment that you stepped into to being an elected official, she made sure that you had all the information. That we needed and some, so when I was first selected, she provided me with with my binders and everything that I needed. And directed me everywhere that I needed to go to ensure that I could, you know, step into this position within all which that I needed. To and I just, you know, wanted to just say that here, if you watch this Andrea. You know, I definitely missed you since the day I find out that you were that you were gone. I value everything that you did for the city and I appreciate you being with us this long. But I also congratulate you for taking this opportunity of being with your family and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much Angela. Alright, we'll read the city Coachella California proclamation. Whereas the eighteen years of service and drug arranca has announced her retirement from the city Coachella effective December 31st, 2022. Whereas in her early years, she wrote photograph design and produces cities newsletter. Prepared press releases, organized and shared special events. And whereas she grew the the daytime Christmas parade to the first ever nighttime lit lit parade. And saw tenants grow by 10,000 and graphically redesigned the colorful Coachella city logo. And whereas her many certifications include municipal clerk, master municipal clerk. FEMA local government archives and records management administrations, computer and graphic design. And whereas she is the city's election official and has conducted election for the past 12 years. And and twice contributed to redesigning the city's website. And whereas Andrea is looking forward to retirement, but most importantly spoiling her grandchildren. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the city Coachella. By the power vested in us, do hereby recognize Andrea Carranza and urge all citizens of the city Coachella to congratulate her on her retirement. Thank you. Want to content calendar? Any content counter items in the pool? Whether wishes of the council.
I just wanted to pull five, six and eight, just wanna have a discussion about it.
Do, okay, we'll discuss them and then we'll put on them together.
And it's the questions directed at the grants.
Go for it.
Just just wanted to talk about in and. Kind of the the process on these community based grants and kind of how much more money we still have there, you know, remaining this fiscal year. So that you know how to other. Organizations in the community and how do they apply and kind of with their rigor processes so that kind of just have that discussion, so.
Thank you for that. You guys hear me? So good evening, Mayor Pottaman, council members, Selena Jimenez, grants manager, thank you for this opportunity to discuss the community based grant program. So the community, can you guys hear me, I feel like I can't. So the community based grant program was established in September of 2010. And it allows the city of Coachella to offer financial assistance to our local nonprofit organizations. Youth serving organizations and other community based organizations that provide essential services, programs and activities to residents in our city. And so applicant organizations are only eligible to submit one application for consideration. For up to $1,000 each fiscal year and must be legally established with nonprofit or tax exempt status. And provide direct service to Coachella residents. So the policy encourages a goal of self sufficiency. And approval of grants in the current fiscal year does not constitute a precedent for grant allocations in some in subsequent years. And so all CBG grants or reimbursement grants to ensure that applicants are meeting their stated goals. In addition, the fiscal year 2223 budget included an allocation of $15,000 for the community based grant program. And should the city council approve the staff recommendations this evening, our CBG grant program account will be diminished to $6,000. If all requests are approved. So the guidelines do require that all applicants submit an IRS letter of determination, a budget and also. If they're awarded a grant, then they must submit evidence of leveraging. And so our program allows for dollar to lot, it requires a dollar for dollar match. And people also have the option to instead of doing a dollar for dollar match, they can serve. Conduct some volunteer service with the city at our events or what have you to make up that award amount so that. People don't have to necessarily provide a dollar for dollar monetary match.
So it's up to $1,000 and just some of them are very, some of them are a little bit more.
Yes, and so the the maximum amount is $1,000, however, sometimes the city will receive requests from applicants for more money.
Yeah.
And so our job as staff is just to bring them forward to you and then you decide if you would like to honor that request or not. And so as you know, everything that we receive, we bring it to you guys for approval and consideration.
Any other comments or questions regarding five, six, eight?
Selena, I'm sorry, you can answer from there. And how do we make nonprofits and other folks aware that this $1,000 grant is available? Because there's a lot of folks and we have some folks here that do a lot for the community. And then so how do we get the word out and how do others, you know, learn about this possibility? Because what's happening is we always have the same people that know. And so obviously they would, you know, put in applications because they're aware of the grant program.
You know, right now we are advertising on our website and word of mouth and you know, many of our community based organizations are aware of the funding opportunity. However, we can possibly feature it on our social media handles and maybe make it, put it at the forefront of our website. If council would like for us to do that, please let us know, we are more than happy to do that. To kind of increase awareness of the opportunity to get a diversified pool of applicants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Selena.
Thank you, thank you so much, Selena. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll go ahead a second.
As luck you do, roll call.
Yes, I'm sorry, who was the second?
Councilmember Virgin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and take role, councilmember then.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Hi.
Mayor.
Alright. Moving on to new business. Item number nine, Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce.
I think they're available attendees, so they can be promoted to panelists.
Thank you, Mister City Manager. Diana Soto, the interim CEO for the Greater Coachella Chamber of Commerce will be presenting on this item for us.
Thank you.
Do you see her, she's listed as G.
Oh, there she is.
There you go.
Took a little bit, my connection was slow, I apologize. Thank you, thank you for having me.
I see you're here too, right, you're you're in the building?
I know, I'm actually at the Indio office. Blow over.
Go for it, alright, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Marita, may I share screen?
Yes, you should be able to share your.
Okay. There we go, are you able to see that, okay?
Yes.
We're moving forward, thank you for the confirmation, thank you for having me, mayor and council members. I just wanted to offer a quick update on our activity with the city of Coachella. Starting off with tourism and contact information, our visitor center is open Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30. We are closed on Fridays and we do honor the calendar that the city offers as well to the public. We have recorded 196 in-person visits and I must say that this report is this fiscal year, July 1st. Through January 31st. You see there a bullet point talking about telephone calls and I say that they're immeasurable. And the reason for that is because all of our phone calls are are trumped, if you will, to our three offices. Someone in Cathedral City can answer a question about an inquiry regarding Coachella business. And then when we are out in the field, our phone lines are forwarded to our cell phone, so it really is kind of impossible to to measure those telephone inquiries. But we definitely are answering the phone no matter where we are. Our business information support includes economic development programs, initiatives and support. Business license information and community events. As far as a visitor center, we offer map distribution, information about the city. Restaurant mural information, things to do, activities, any events that may be going on with our nonprofits. Or any other types of community events. We manage a lot of the inquiries for the consulado and we offer civic center related information such as where to go. And offering that information for city related business, if you will. Staff training also includes the. It's called team champions, right, through the as a tourism ambassador, right, through visit Palm Springs and that's one of the contracted deliverables that we have. And our staff has actually met that, one of the things I wanted to mention about this is that there is a. An app called Art GPS and you might be able to take a look at it on Google Play. Where they have actually taken the murals from Coachella and Indio and created a route. For those who are looking for something to do. So once again, when you want to reconcile on, when you have an extra moment. Art GPS and you can find that in your App Store, it's a really cool app, it talks about the mural, the history, it gives a direction, it maps it out. And I, we're actually exploring some opportunities to maybe. Being able to pull that for a shop local program or a restaurant program as well, that that definitely would be in future conversations. Our current number count in Coachella is 55 with renew. Our current member count in Coachella is 55 with renewals at 19. We do have renewal incentives in place for the members of Coachella. Sometimes there is a little bit of a, of a struggle with paying the membership. So we are very flexible if we need to offer the renewal program on a quarterly basis, or if they want to make two payments, or however that may be. We just want to make sure that they don't lose their membership and that they are definitely connected to the Coachella Chamber. We do have new member celebrations, integrity insurance, Ms. Rosales funeral planning and El Pecado. And then we do offer the Chamber 101 seminars, which are monthly networking programs to keep members informed of updates and opportunities that the chamber offers to them at different levels in order for them to continue to grow and strengthen their business. The Coachella member incentive program again is for, now this is also for new members. Again, going back to the installment program, if someone is interested in joining the member or as a member and they're not able to afford the membership, we are very flexible. We are most interested in, in having them have access to all of the tools that they need to be a successful business owner. We also offer a program where we can offset the membership, if you will, with maybe a program volunteer. Let's say, for example, if there is a community event and they are not able to afford the membership on the front end, but we can offset that with some investment hours, if you will, and get that taken care of. We're just doing everything we can to make sure that we don't lose any membership in, in the city. Business development and community outreach. We do offer GCB educate programs and these are placed in different areas. And many of them are focused towards Coachella. You see here a list and I'm not going to read them all, but you see here a list where there have been, for example, in Tilly Henske Emocional in La Presa in July. And then we also had the Recursos Disponibles para Propietarios de Negocios in January, which was the event that was held at the Coachella Library, very, very successful with over 10 exhibitors. And we did have about 60 business owners and potential business owners of which a lot of the city staff did present. And we continue to have a lot of engagement and ongoing conversations as a result of that. And looking forward to phase two in April and setting these up on an ongoing quarterly basis. Our city walk dates were in August, October, December, January, and the next one is set for March. And this is where we engage board members, local chamber board members. Mayor has demonstrated an interest in joining us and a few of council members have as well. Where we break up in groups of two or three and just basically canvass the city and just listen to what our business owners have to say. What is it that keeps them up at night? What is it that makes them worry? What is it that they're happy about? What improvements can we, can we take suggestions on? And then implement action to make sure that they're getting what they need again to be successful and strong. And then business support events, GCBCC nominated two Coachella businesses for, and but it's not on, and best on others on the move. Integrity Insurance in Garibaldi Plaza. And they were runners up and unfortunately not awarded, but we definitely did support them. Marketing, the chamber regularly updates its website with community news, events, postings and business resources. Coachella events and activities are actively marketed on our platforms, Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. The chamber newsletter is distributed to over 65,000, or excuse me, I wish it were 65,000, 6,500 registrants through constant contact. They choose to be on this mail list and receive the information. Chamber offers a promotional platform at all of the mixers where members can set up a exhibition table at no cost. And we really do that again to facilitate branding and expansion of their business. We offer members the opportunity to vote themselves at our different offices with flyers, business cards and other promotional activities. And we also maintain a business directory and a referral network. In the event that someone needs a particular business, we want to make sure that we keep them engaged and we call them. We don't, we don't send emails. With all of our Coachella businesses, we are very hands on. And Wada Lupe or one of the team members will actually go and visit a business or we pick up the phone and call them and engage in business. Our city partnership events for September, so far we have succeeded with Fiesta Patrias in October, the State of the City and Business Awards, tacos, tequila and chavelas and the Coachella Candidates Forum, December Holiday Parade. And then March, we're looking forward to the Suavecito Sundays, the 5th, 12th and 19th. And that, I didn't, and that concludes the presentation.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I just have a quick comment. And I think it's, I'm not, I'm not sure if this has been discussed before, but I know that with, you know, COVID-19 and all of that that we experienced in our business community. I'm just wondering like what has been some of the things that maybe small business owners have pointed out? What would be some things that perhaps the chamber is doing to prepare itself? Should something like COVID-19 or that magnitude happen again? Just curious to, you know, hear your thoughts and what are some things that the chamber is doing?
Resources, you know, the first time around, we didn't have the resources. We didn't have the programs in place, either health resources or funding resources. And I think that county and local cities are now prepared at a different level to at least be able to steer everyone in, in that direction. And while the process is not polished, so to speak, we have a good idea as to, as to where to go. Right? It all depends on the business. You know, our restaurants were impacted. Were probably the heaviest impacted and that is really the, the biggest industry that you have in, in your city are restaurants. And so it was, it was a little touch and go. There was a lot of just supporting restaurants with conversations and making sure that they knew that there, that there were opportunities, resolutions and options. And also guide them to modify things that probably were affecting them financially, maybe workforce, maybe the lack of food delivery, right? And, and maybe adjusting hours, just making suggestions that when you're outside of the box, it seems kind of obvious. But when you're a business owner and you're involved and, and, and these things are happening, there's a level of anxiety. And we were just really there to support them and, and be able to, to walk them through whatever it is that was, that was bothering them the most, right? Or what they needed the most. So I think I can just answer the question in a very general manner, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a needs assessment. It's what does that business need? You know, the Panaderia can need something totally different than the Takeria next door. It's, it's, it's just a matter of being available to them.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And just one more question. This is kind of referencing back to like your membership. Is there anything that, I know you mentioned, you know, how the membership looks here in the city. Is there anything that the city or staff can do to help increase that membership? Is there any kind of support that you're looking for that would be helpful?
Yes, you know, I, I sent out a request to, to Cessad and what I'd really like to do is make sure that we're receiving his business listing. Maybe on a quarterly basis. I don't know about a monthly basis, but on a quarterly basis. And really in setting some time aside with him and, and combing through and seeing what kind of businesses are these? Are they brick and mortar? Are they, are they home businesses? And kind of separating and, and create niche target markets, right? Or, or targets, right? Separating them into categories and, and really just trying to increase our membership with, with all of them. I don't, we, we've never really combed through that and, and, and why it is, I, I can't, I can't explain why. It's just seems like something that, that's should just be done. But I would just really like to have the time to, to sit with him and just get a good idea as to the full makeup of his business licenses. Who's renewed? Who's brand new? Who pulled the business license but hasn't opened their brick and mortar? You know, who's, who's behind? Just so many questions that could help us identify potential members so we can continue offering all of these programs.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. If you have any questions, you, you've got my number. You've got my email.
I think there's still more questions. I think there's some more questions from other council members.
Okay. My only question that I have for you, you know, there is a couple of new businesses coming to the, to the city. What are your efforts to recruit businesses that are going to open in the next couple of months to join the chamber before they kind of open or kind of courting them? How do you, what are your, kind of what are your plans? Are you doing there to get them to, you know, join in an advance or what incentives you're kind of showcasing to them as they're potentially going to open there? And you, I'm talking about the new one on Caesar Chavez, a new Mexican restaurant. So kind of like places like that, for example.
Sure, sure. So yeah, we, we, we go out and we do a needs assessment. Let's find out about what their plans are, what their vision is. How they would like to be engaged in the business community? How would they would like to be leaders in their industry within your city? How connected they want to be with the chamber and with, and with, with you, right? What are they needing right now through the opening process? Are they needing HR support? Are they needing payroll support? Small business support? Are they needing vendor support? And it's relational. We, we are a very relational organizational, or excuse me, a very relational organization versus a very transactional. So you go, you gain trust, you, you, and, and it grows from there. And then it just becomes second nature. Of the 196 visits that end in Guadalupe get at that, at the office, a lot of it is your local business owners that are coming in and just asking. You know, tenía una pregunta or, you know, tenía una duda or what if? Or can you help me? Or can you direct me? Or is this even possible? But yes, those are the efforts in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much. Look forward to continuing. We have councilmember Delgado.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Joining us. I think that some of the challenges and barriers, I think that you tapped into a bit when you began with your presentation is one of the biggest concerns or complaints that I get is the membership fees. A lot of our businesses, you know, our, our small businesses, our startup businesses, mom and pop type of, you know, businesses. And their membership fees are a bit high for them. As well as, you know, the mixers, you know, they find them a bit expensive as well. And I know that you guys make every effort to visit every city and, you know, make sure that you're targeting different types of restaurants to highlight their business. So maybe it's something that we can help out here at the city to get them that type of support because that is something or one of the biggest barriers. Another barrier and, and I appreciate the attention to the Spanish sessions that you're providing. I think that's been a big, how, a big, you know, support system for many of the businesses as we got confirmation from the day that we had the event at the library was such a big turnout. And I think because it was, you know, in Spanish and I think that it made many of our businesses a bit more comfortable to come out and that we were going to be speaking to them in Spanish. And so I do thank you for making that effort, you know, this year and last year to increase the sessions and workshops in Spanish. Another thing I really wanted to touch up a bit on is we have a lot of businesses, you know, that are not registered. And I know many of them do want to get registered. They want to have the proper license. They want to participate in our big events. And because they don't have the license or the permits, they really can't participate in some of these big events as many cities require, you know, like the Tamale Festival, you know, many of those businesses are very successful and how much money they bring in within just a few hours. So there is some benefits, you know, to having these types of licenses. I think one of the challenges for them is just not knowing where to start, where to go to, what is the application? What is the application fee? Is there multiple agencies? Cause sometimes the county is involved. Sometimes it goes to the city of Coachella. So there's a lot of confusion additionally, when you're looking at these different types of businesses. As you have mentioned, you know, different types of businesses do go through different types of permit processes. And so I know that we talked about it a bit, but I'm hoping in the second workshop that we have that we are going into this a bit more. And I know the SBDC does an excellent job as well to give these types of workshops. So I'm hoping to see a little bit more of that in our next workshop.
Absolutely. Yeah, points well taken. I think that on your, on your first point and I'll touch a little bit on all three. I would take you up on your offer and I think that an idea that I had about proposing is a scholarship program, if you will, right? Let's say someone comes forward and they're a brand new business, they, they can't afford the membership. Let's go ahead and put them through the scholarship program, but then they must participate in the sessions, right? And that it's a win-win for everyone and it's a great investment on behalf of the city and on behalf of the chamber. And maybe at that point we can, you know, there's always administrative and hard costs. Maybe we do a 50/50 and we provide that scholarship for them so that they can go through the process. I would also would like to reach out to the bigger businesses and have them mentor a smaller business, someone to take under their wing, right? And they can sponsor them. You know, I think about Alma Gutierrez at Garibaldi and I think about how great she would be to mentor another business. I mentioned Maida at Integrity Insurance. She would be a fantastic person to mentor another small business. And that would be something that we can work out in detail in the future. The Spanish sessions, yes, I, I appreciate the fact that, that you all are happy with that. Sometimes it is a little bit more difficult to get the sessions in Spanish. But we will not stop trying because we know it's so important. And we saw the success at the, at the, at the most recent one, right? 60 businesses and potential new businesses that are eager to know, that are eager to have that information. And sometimes if they're not registered is because, it's not because they don't want to or they're ignoring the fact. Sometimes they don't know what they don't know. And, and that's, we have to give them the benefit of the doubt, right? In my opinion anyways, and, and go from there. And then on the third point, as far as the smaller businesses that are not registered and the new businesses, I think that maybe moving forward in our community events, we showcase or we, we open up X amount of positions. If you will, vendor positions is what I'm referring to for these smaller businesses to showcase themselves. And maybe they start small. Maybe they're, they don't start off with, you know, selling to 2,000 people. But maybe they start off with something small that they can handle and kind of just get the experience and move forward. And we offset whatever the expenses are until after the event. They basically have the opportunity to earn, then they can turn around and, and credit whatever it is the fees are, whether it be licensing fees or our membership fees. But there's a lot of opportunity to work with your businesses and, and we're just happy to be part of it. It's, it's just a matter of sitting down and, and really putting pen to pencil and just making it happen.
Thank you. I do fully support sponsorships and scholarships if council would be open to that. Maybe we can bring something back so that we can look into, to help some of these small businesses, you know, get up and, and get, you know, more, get more name recognition out there and bring in more business to their shops.
Do you have any idea, councilmember, how many businesses you may have unregistered at this point?
We have quite a bit. We, we do have quite a bit. And I think that they, they popped up a bit more during COVID. And I know that that's happened in many cities, not just in the city of Coachella. And so I, I think what's happened is that they really become dependent on that additional income. And that makes complete sense. And so I, I do think it's, it's quite a bit. I mean, I, I think it's, it's maybe more than, than 50. I'm positive.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely sit down and look at it. And it's something that we can divide and conquer. And, and if it's something that the chamber can facilitate as a, as a liaison to the city, you know, and if we can, we can facilitate that approach and say, look, this is really important. Let's figure out a way to fix this. We're happy to be of service and, and, and start gearing towards making sure that everybody's registered the way they need to be.
Thank you.
For the majority.
Vamos a cambiar. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Diana. You know, it, it's a great to have you here. There, you know, the questions or comments I had were already said. I just want to comment, you know, since, since, since the Chamber of Commerce was organizing, creating, structured into the Great Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, you're the first Latina in, in that position. And, and we're seeing an increase of Spanish services through the chamber. And so representation matters and we're seeing it in action. And so not, not to discredit anyone else, I think, you know, your folks that were there before you did amazing work as well. And I respect them for the work that they did and the service they did to the valley and our businesses. But I just wanted to comment that to, you know, great to have. But I just wanted to comment that to, you know, great to have you in that role and hopefully the interim becomes permanent soon. So, congrats.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you to all of you and we appreciate your ongoing support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, item number ten, authorized city manager to execute change order number one. An amount of a hundred eighty-two, eight hundred eighty-two, hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred with eight hundred eighty-two. Plus fifteen percent contingency and authorize appropriation of hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-three with twenty-eight cents. From general fund for the Bagduma Court Improvements Project, City Project P two-one, CBDG Project Number Four, CO twenty-four twenty.
Thank you, council members, for your time this evening. So this is to approve a change order for the Bagduma Basketball Court Rehabilitation Project. Just for quick background, um, the project was awarded in September to Three Peaks Corporation for six one four three ten. The project was designed to be fully CBDG funded. And the overall purpose of the project is to resurface, repaint the courts. Install new rims and gone over. All of the items that we're doing at basketball courts previously.
Three meetings.
Yes. But. When we started this project, the original purpose, we wanted to value engineering the projects. We took concrete cores. And it looked like the concrete underneath was in great shape based on the concrete cores that we took out in the field when we were doing the design. Uh, so we did have a value engineering idea to leave the concrete in place. And then overlay it with Kevlar reinforced asphalt surfacing. However, as soon as we started peeling up the asphalt, uh, what we couldn't see from the cores. Was that the rebar reinforcement within the concrete. Was completely rotten and degraded, so it had the sulfate penetration. And there were um, significant cracking on two-foot grids throughout the entire concrete section. So if we were to move forward with the original value engineering design, all those cracks, that degradation within the underlying concrete would. Come through to the surface and would, you know, result in very poor product when we're done. So. In order to move forward with the project. The preferred solution would be to remove all of the underlying concrete. And replace it with a five-inch new concrete slab. One of the the benefits to this um. Is that it does produce a better product overall, so the courts will have a longer lifespan by moving forward in this process. Won't have any schedule delays by moving forward in this process. And it'll be actually a smoother court finish. So it is an overall better product. But it is the more expensive option that we were trying to avoid at the beginning. But because of the, you can see the pictures, the highly decorated concrete underneath the asphalt we started pulling up. To give an update on the schedule, um, like I said, it was awarded in September. If you're wondering why it took a while to get started on the project, that was actually intentional because there are some long lead items on the project. With the lighting and the electrical. So with the supply chain problems that are still in effect with a lot of electrical equipment. We did want to leave those courts open through the holiday season. We didn't want to start construction. And have it be completely shut down during the holiday season while we're waiting for these long lead items to be delivered. So those items have been ordered. Um, they're mostly in stock and we are ready to. You know, aggressively move forward with the construction. Assuming that the uh, the change orders approved. So they did begin in January and. If we move forward with this change order, they can move forward on schedule. It would take about three months to complete the project, so we'd be looking at late May. Total construction budget was originally six twenty-four with a contingency of sixty-two thousand. That was supposed to all be funded through CBD resources. The change order cost to do this additional work is a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. That would require additional appropriation from general fund of about one fifty-nine. So that's the one ninety-two less the sixty-two contingency that we already planned for the project. And that makes the new project total. Eight forty-six, one twenty-four. So the recommendation from staff is to authorize the. City manager to execute change order number one and to authorize the appropriation from the general fund for the. Improved surface.
Two hundred thousand here, five hundred thousand additional for the fire station. I mean, I. I'm not too happy about taking additional one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the general fund. But at this point, I think we're too far into it to not move forward with it. We've advertised it. You know, it's much needed. Our residents are happy and looking forward to it. So with that, I mean, I think we're at the point where. We just have to move forward, especially with all the time and money that's already been allocated to it. At this point, it would be a loss not to move forward with it.
Gotta build it. And um, he's like you said, we go with what you have, you'd have the. People would come back and complain that the courts look ugly because we cut corners.
You'll look good for a year or two, but it would. It would deteriorate very quickly if we. Overlay it on the on the concrete condition.
Okay, Bill, we're good on the money?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the um. City manager to make the adjustment, uh, authorized city manager execute change order number one and authorize appropriations from the general fund.
A second, your second? All second. Angela, can we do roll call?
Yes, uh, council member Delgado.
Yes.
Council member Figueroa.
Hi.
Council member Vitoria.
Hi.
Mayor Potem, Vanessa.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have tabled item number eleven at the recommendation of our staff. Uh, thank you all, planning commission. Candidates and thank you for your patience. Bear with us through the process. We'll look forward to taking action on this. Ideally, in the next city council meeting. Uh, scheduled for the second week of March. Item number twelve, authorize the city managers to execute a professional services agreement. With dock dock and engineering for the Grapefruit Airport Boulevard Crossing Water to transmission main project in the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand and twenty dollars.
Good evening, Mayor Proten, members of the council. As you mentioned, the. Item before you is to um, recommendation authorize the city manager to execute a PSA with dock and engineering for. The design and planning of a transmission main project. For the amount that that you stated. Um, I have um. A presentation that's going to get into some detail as to how we got here. It's a. It's a pretty significant project, uh, requires a lot of planning and effort. It's driven uh, by a particular development and. There's some history associated with that, so I just want to kind of give you um. An update on how we got here. So the the project that that's kind of uh. Depended on this uh, on this. The develop the developer that's dependent on this project is a. Project that has been circulating around the city. For some years now, it's called the Airport Business Park Project. It's shown there. On the yellow. Uh, highlighted area, it's about the forty forty plus acres. And it's on the other side of the railroad. To to the east of the railroad, to the east of the storm channel. And the away from our existing water infrastructure. Back in back in two thousand sixteen, the the city had issued a letter to this developer. When they first submitted an application. For development review. At that time, the the city indicated that. We have an agreement with CBWD that we entered in two thousand eight. That sets our service boundary, so everything north of airport. Is within our water boundary. Everything south of airport. Is CBWD's boundary, so we. That's airport is what defines our area of service. So we have this agreement with CBWD that says. If a developer wants to be provided water by CBWD. In our service area, we have to kind of provide a release letter. So back in twenty sixteen, the city provided a release letter to the project and basically said, hey, look. We don't have the infrastructure in place. It's it's kind of far away. It would require significant improvements in order for us to serve you water. We're okay if CBWD provides water. Uh, in general, CBWD has a a water line on airport. And that's why sometimes it's a little bit more feasible for CBWD to provide the service. Uh, however, the project was not developed. And the project uh, recirculated an application on June twenty twenty. At that time, they uh, they approached CBWD kind of waving the same letter saying, hey, we're ready to submit uh, plans. For water service. CBWD said. The letter you have is old from the city. You're required to get a new a new World Surf Letter. Uh, the 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 World Surf Letters that we provide have a thirty-six month expiration. So it was uh, outside uh. The 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 letter, the expiration, so. So when we uh, resubmitted a letter to the project. We had a little bit of different language in there. We said was. Look, we have an interest in making the same crossing. That CBWD would have to make in order to serve you. So i- if CBWD uh, is. Is if we agree that CBWD is going to provide the service. We have to ensure as a city that we have uh, an agreement that in the future, when we expand our services, we're going to be able to take on that service that belongs to us. Uh, and so that was kind of the initial uh, comment to to the developer. Uh, upon kind of further coordination between the city and CBWD. We were, we we found out that CBWD was. Requiring a tremendous amount of infrastructure. In order to serve the project, it was making the project responsible for that infrastructure improvements. Uh, and so there was really no reason. Why we needed to typically when a developer asks for someone else to provide services because. You know, their pipe is near nearby and our pipe is super far away. And this in this situation, in this exhibit, you can see that uh. CBWD pipe is in the kind of lighter uh. The lighter blue, uh, the the street on the bottom is airport. And uh, and so they would have to basically come from that uh, that curve or there. It's the thermal. That's the thermal. Post office. And so they're basically, they they basically said to the developer, you're going to have to build. That whole portion in blue, which is kind of ties to the green. To to cut across uh, the railroad, the storm channel, private property to get back on airport. And so we said, well, look, we we need to have the same crossing. So if CBWD is going to require you to do all that to serve you. Then we might as well require you to do the same thing. And expand our our system into the area that that we serve. So that 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 was kind of the difference between the twenty sixteen response and the twenty twenty response. Again, the project since twenty twenty kind of went dormant. There was no real activity on the project. And just recently, a few months ago, the project. Resubmitted uh, the project for for comments. Because there were some new changes to the project. One of those changes is uh, they they need to add an area for a substation for us for IID. Uh, and so we're we're still kind of talking to the developer and then you know. You're going to be responsible for making these improvements. Uh, fast forward to today, um. CBWD has already started. Of planning efforts for the crossing that they need for improvements on their own system. CBWD has a line that that crosses the expressway. You can see their existing system there on, as I mentioned, the lighter blue line. They have a section on airport that's uh, to the west of uh. Of the railroad. Right? Kind of like by the boxing club there. And then they have a portion that that that's underneath the expressway. There's nothing connecting those those lines, that that middle portion is missing. And so CBWD needs to make that crossing because they need to move water. Across across to the other side because they have all that service area south of airport on the other side. We we need to make the same crossing because we have all that service area north. And so um. It wouldn't be smart for us not to make the crossing because then it just kind of puts us even further away from being able to serve our area. So um. CBWD with its own plans basically started planning uh, for their crossing. And what they did is uh, last year. They've actually started planning for the crossing. This is uh, they they started some of the Sequoar documentation. To allow for the construction of their project. The area that they studied is that area highlighted there in in the pink. Um, at that time, they didn't know uh, where they would put their line, so. They basically uh, studied a whole area so they could have some flexibility on where to put the line. Understanding that they needed to cross through private property, they needed to negotiate easements with the private owner. They wanted to have some flexibility to put the pipe. But that creates a big area, so now that uh, if we want to put our own pipe, that area has been studied, we can piggyback on that and that sequel documentation. It's not something that we need to do because it's already been performed and uh, the study has the sequel documentation that's been adopted. Um, and that and that basically shows you, imagine, this is a CBWD exhibit showing the potential alignments. But let's just imagine that. One line is CBWD's line and one line is the city's line. And so we would, the the intent now is to is to build two lines parallel to each other. And so th- these are just kind of highlighting some of the benefits of part of the CBWD. This is uh, the crossing that would happen. Through the railroad. This is facing south. It's kind of coming out of that intersection there that goes into the uh, thermal. Post office. And then this is where it would come out uh, on the storm channel and across the storm channel. And go to the other side of the storm channel, the channel where you see the the water tower and it would kind of go down to airport. You see the. The bridge kind of on the south side there, so so it needs to make that crossing. It needs to get to airport. So that it could shoot uh, down the expressway. Uh, this is just some of the findings uh, that. CBWD already performed, so all of this has been uh, completed through CBWD's effort. We would just kind of be thinking back, you know. Uh, here, uh, just more additional benefits uh. With to our partnership, but CBWD executed a uh, PSA with dock and engineering. For the planning uh, and of their crossing and that was back in June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and so since then, we've been having conversations because of this project and. With CBWD knowing that we need to make some more crossing. And so we, you know, we what we said is how do we how do we make sure that we can. Benefit from all the work that's been done already. You've you've hired an engineer to do the planning. You've kind of started the the investigations on utilities. You you you're kind of starting the initial conversations on the eastern acquisition on private property. You've started the right of entry for uh, the railroad for storm channel. They're they're kind of doing a lot of uh, they they've performed a lot of the the. The initial studies, so. So what we decided that it was it was the best, the best approach was for us to enter into our own professional service agreement with dock and engineering. For the design of our line. And then what we would do is those plans and specs would be our plans and specs for our line. And then we would we would embed those those plans uh, into one bit document. For one contractor to build and there would be some some benefit in that construction cost. And that's typically done, that's it's a pretty normal for that to happen. For example. Uh, there are partnerships within the county of Riverside and CBWD. Uh, one of the partnerships that that's happening right now is with uh, CBWD's doing some storm channel work. That requires some modification to some of uh, the county's bridges. And so what the county did was the same thing. They kind of put their own plans together. And when CBWD put out a construction project that focused on the storm channel, they embedded those construction drawings. Into that bid document so that it can all be handled by one contractor. So those are those are some strategies that sometimes public agencies kind of enter into those agreements with benefits. Uh, another big benefit to why it's uh, beneficial for us to enter into contract with dock and engineering. As part of CBWD's project, they're going to work on permits, approvals, as I mentioned, that require approvals from AQMD, from the county of Riverside, approaching permits. They're going to require uh, permits from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They're going to require permits from Fish and Wildlife. They're going to require permits from the Union Pacific Railroad. And dockin is already doing all that for CBWD. So for them to do it for our line would just be very new. Versus having to have a brand new consultant reinitiate all that. Uh, some of the other conversations that we've been having uh, preliminary with the developer. Is that, so wait, the way we're going to face this is this. There's two faces, there's the, there's the red line. Our water line right now is on Avenue fifty-four, so there is no line on Grapefruit, right? And so what we've said is, we're, we may be willing to negotiate something where an agreement where. We plan and we build the portion in red, we call that phase one. So that we give you a similar point of connection that you would have had with CBWD. CBWD's point of connection is that is at that intersection of Palm and Grapefruit by the. By the post office. So rather than conditioning the developer to take on the full cost of expanding the water line all the way from fifty, from fifty-four. We're saying, we're willing to 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 kind of enter into an agreement where we would take on the design cost. And the construction cost of phase one. That would be ready so that when phase two kicks in, as we finish our plans for the crossing and CBWD finishes their plans for the crossing. If our line is already there to tie into. And and then we would have a cost sharing agreement for the portion in green. And so when you see the, when you see your proposal for docking, which I passed, the city engineer passed out. You you see that the cost is broken down from phase, phase A and phase, phase one and phase two, phase, phase one has a cost of. A hundred and fifty thousand for for planning and I believe phase two has a cost of like two hundred and sixty-two thousand. Again, those are, those are kind of the the way we're approaching the project, it's been, it's been vetted through management. We're in agreement, at a certain point, we'll bring that agreement back to you for input, whether you liked it or or not, and then. We can modify it from then so that we can properly put caution where we need to be. Um, so that's, that's, that's the, that's the recommendation is to work with the contract for for planning and design. And then just for, I put this, just for more information on what the project is that that's kind of driving this, this this project. This is the the Coachella Airport Business Park. You can see that that it's a, it's a, it's a big area. Again, it's been floating around for almost seven years. There is no water line on airport that that's kind of running airport there on where where it fronts their parcel on airport. And so whether whether CBWD decided to provide water or when we decided to provide water. The pipeline needs to get built across the storm channel and the railroad, so. I think it's crucial that that we.
Yeah, any questions or comments from staff, let me counsel? I see here that the, you know, we're committing to see, yeah, for us to take on this and the funds are available from the Water Connection Service. Any motions?
And then Bill, you're aware of the project as well? You're good to go with it?
Yes, in fact, that was one of the first things that Castillo came up to me with was asking about the funding.
So can you speak into the mic, please, so we can hear you on the screen?
Sure. One of the first things we did was discuss this project because the timing was critical because of CBWD moving forward. It completely makes sense, we don't want to duplicate efforts, we need to get that crossing in. There's about five point eight million dollars sitting in connection fee monies right now, so the funds are available for this and specifically what these five fees are supposed to be used for.
Do you hear motion?
And that's set on motion to. Approve agenda number twelve, authorizing the city manager to execute professional service agreement for Doc and Engineering.
Do you hear second?
I'll second.
Angela, please roll call.
Councilmember Delgado? Yes, councilmember Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galasa?
Aye. Moving on to item number thirteen, authorize an operating agreement with bound corporations for scooter and e-bikes.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and councilmembers, Selina Jimenez, grants manager. And the I, and I also wanted to introduce the Bound Corporation team, we have the founders. And the software and manufacturers present here to answer any questions you may have regarding this wonderful. Deployment. So the item before you is asking for your authorization to authorize an operating agreement with Bound Corporation. For e-scooters and e-bikes. And so Bound Corporation was established in twenty twenty-two by local Coachella residents who wanted to free. Shared electric scooter and bicycle micro mobility transportation that is both affordable and eco-friendly. And so this is basically how Bound will work, they will have a mobile application that will be available to users. And this application, they will be able to find it and pay for the transportation method of choice on a twenty-four-seven basis. And. And so these, these scooters and bicycles are actually state of the art. If I may point out, the e-scooter actually has a battery. A battery that can be removed and and charged versus other competitors, scooters, they are. They have to be electrically charged, and so the advantage of these scooters and e-bikes is that you can remove the. The battery, it's a swappable or interchangeable swappable battery. And and also the scooter has, it comes with these indicators and shock absorbers, which make it a lot safer. For users to use, staff actually test drove the e-scooters and the e-bikes and actually they were pretty. Pretty safe, they felt there was, the shock absorbers were, ma- make the ride very safe and and just like smooth. And they also have a kickstand with them. And so the indicators are basically their, their lights that let them know when the light is green or if there's like a. It it senses, you know, it it alerts basically the user to to maybe not proceed with crossing the street if. The the signal is red or what have you. And the e-bicycles are also a very smooth ride, they come with these little baskets and. And and even like a place to hold your phone so that you're not distracted. As you're using the the scooters or e-bikes. And they also come with signal indicators and a front storage bin and a kickstand. And so some of the mobile app features will actually include, you know. Connections with, it's a little have like interactive connections with the city, maybe. People will get alerts about special events that are going on throughout the city. Businesses can create a reward system for shopping at their location. It will provide a map of nearby stores, e-scooters and e-bikes and promote. Delivery service by discounting delivery rates for food and and what have you. And we're, and this is a a very broad location map, but basically where wherever you see a P. Is where where Bound Corporation will have its scooters and they will have a. Like a map, like a micro mobility parking area, so they'll have like these designated. Parking locations in strategic locations throughout the city where users can park their bike or e-scooter. And they sort of look like this, next slide. I'll show, show that in just a moment, but the rates, they have the normal user rates for one dollar to activate in thirty-five cents per minute. The rate for low income users will be fifty cents to unlock and fifteen cents per minute to ride. And if you see the graphic there on the right hand side, the micro parking sticker. They will have these to avoid pollution on our streets and right away. So people will be encouraged to to park or return their e-bike or scooter in these dock locations. And also. The bound operators will actually come and and remove any equipment within one hour that appears to be. It, you know, in the way of of the street or the public right away because these scooters and e-bikes have GPS. They're enabled GPS, and so they're able to see where exactly the scooters or e-bikes are located. And so another thing that Bound is offering is they purchase these little tiny little smart cars. And these are the cars that they're going to use to come around and 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 avoid obviously visual pollution, but then also. To do the interchangeable swappable battery exchange for both the e-bikes and the scooters. And so that obviously makes it very convenient and 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 will restore a scooter or e-bike to to. You know, to to be used immediately. And this concludes our presentation, we thank you for your time and consideration and as I mentioned, the team is here this evening. If anyone has a question about the deploying of the scooters, we will have a point, a deployment date of March thirteenth. If council approves their operating agreement with the city of Coachella.
Questions or comments from our council?
I just have one question, I think if you can go back to the the slide where it goes over the rates. So I know it says like rate for low income user, how will that be determined?
Okay, so the Bound plans on having on their app like a place where people can submit verification. So if anyone is enrolled in an assistance program, they automatically qualify and and so it'll just be like they scan it. You know, they take picture, upload it, and then they will review it.
That's really amazing, is there anything specific for students? Because I know that a lot of times our, our students may, you know, use that as a form of like transportation to go to the library or.
Sure.
Or get to school.
Are still working on on hashing all of that out because they're, they're also going to offer text to ride services, which means that. If you don't have a smartphone, you can actually te- text and and activate your scooter and also. They'll be able to pay for the ride through that method as well, so they're working on on those small details.
Wonderful, thank you.
Will, will, will we be the first city you guys work with? I I see your office in India, we have a lot of office space in Coachella. Maybe you guys could look, look into and bring your business into. You know, I think, you know, we're a very innovative city and and we take, you know, it's up to you guys, but we're, we're willing to take in. A partnership and you're headquartered in our city. This is this recommendation, not not mandating anything. Yeah, because I was looking at you guys and I, I didn't see the app yet, but I see you guys have it and I, I, I trust our staff, they test write it and I just couldn't find a lot online. I appreciate, you know, the local ownership, the innovation, having, you know, and then. Us here, you know, we're from, we're from the, we're from the valley too and and part of the idea of serving. We've supported other bigger businesses like, you know, we brought in Bird and, you know, but but the idea now to be able to. To work with the local, you know, entrepreneurs, I think that's part of the reason why we, why we run for office, you know, it's being able to create opportunities for. For our people, you know, so that's pretty cool, you know, applauding for being here today.
What is your rate competitive to to Bird or you lower priced or lower priced?
Cool, cool, I, well, I look forward to to touring your Coachella office when, when you guys, when you.
I think one of the, well, the challenges though here, Mayor Potem is that the the space that we have are too large. You know, there's a lot of square footage on the empty spaces that we have. And so we definitely need, and I know we've talked about it before, is that we definitely need more development of small office space. That is more affordable for some of our local businesses. I did want to quickly highlight them as well when I, when I seen them in the Economic Development Committee. I knew I knew them from somewhere and I couldn't, I couldn't put my finger on at the time, but they actually do a lot of work with the homeless community. They partner up with a barber, right, that comes out and brings out the van. And they they set it up in the park and they, you know, cut their hair and make sure that they, you know, have the proper hygiene. So they do a lot, a lot of in the community that I think that they're not acknowledged for. And so I did want to highlight to my colleagues here just how much you do for our community, so thank you for all of that.
Do I have motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'll take role, councilmember Delgado?
Second?
No, we didn't get a second yet.
Oh, I thought you were seconding my, I'm sorry.
Do you hear second?
We, we thought you had second, I'll second.
Cool.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Aye.
Councilmember Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galasa?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right, moving on to public hearing calendar. We're in open up a public hearing for agenda item number fourteen, Coachella Entertainment Park. EP number twenty-two zero one, thirty-six month renewal request adoption number twenty-two three oh nine, approving a renewal entertainment permit. Number twenty-two oh one for the Coachella Entertainment Park outdoor team venue located on one point twenty-four acre site at. Eight five nine nine four Grapefruit Boulevard, AP number seven seven eight zero three zero 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 five and seven seven eight. One eight zero 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 one applicant Nicholas Mesa.
Thank you, members of the city council, Gabriel Betis, your development services director. And I'm showing the presentation, so if it's not showing, let me know. But this item is the Coachella Entertainment Park number, a permit number twenty-two dash zero one. This is the location of the facility at eight five nine nine four Grapefruit Boulevard. Next to the Union Pacific Railroad, it's one point two four acres over two parcels, it's leasable area from the Union Pacific Railroad. And it's, it, the outdoor events that. They've received an entertainment permit for would be for food, music and art. They do have two repurposed shipping containers for food vendors and restroom facilities with outdoor dining. There are two twenty-nine foot wide driveway gates and a special event stage for performances. In terms of the operations of the venue, events are seven days a week or can be seven days a week under the permit. There is onsite parking for seventy-eight spaces and twelve additional overflow spaces. All events required to end by two AM and security is required for events that exceed fifty persons. Or when alcohol is served with increased security measures as required by the city manager or the police. Now, this permit, you've seen this come back to the city council last year. For our entertainment permit ordinance, it does allow for permits to be issued for a year. And for renewal by the city council before the end of the year. That's why this is before you today, in terms of the events that were held at the Coachella Entertainment Park, there were. Various events that were held such as small vendor open air markets. It's been used as staging for the Run with Los Martos community procession, there's been community fundraisers held on the property. Concerts, they've also coordinated with the city providing parking for the city's urban greening groundbreaking program. And for larger events, more than three hundred and twenty people, they are required to get a special event permit. And they did this for a larger event for five hundred attendees, which was an event by promo VIP promotions. For large concert on January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And then here are photographs of the the site. And here is showing the converted containers that they have on site as well as stage at the bottom. As far as the entertainment permit ordinance, there are things that the city council can consider. Now, there is, there are conditions of approval for the entertainment permit that we believe are important to make sure that the site can operate. In a way that's safe for the community, but the city council could also add other conditions. If if the city council chose to, but those include possible regulations around days and hours of operations. Total number of persons allowed during its operation, traffic control, noise, security, safety measures and use of handheld metal detectors. Based on the operation, staff has seen few issues with the site. Usually if there is an event that's going to happen, they do notify the development services department about those events. And so we'll let them know if if it, the size of the event would require a special event permit. And so the applicant Nicholas Mesa has been in constant communication with us about those events. I do want to highlight the the larger event that was held as a separate permit, especially that. That permit, there were some, some calls for complaints in in the evening. So we'll be working with the police department to make sure that those could be. Better dealt with the next time there's a special event permit for events that are over three hundred and twenty people. We did ask Lieutenant Vazquez if there were any issues. We did ask Lieutenant Vasquez if there were any issues about renewing the permit. And he said there would be no issues or no additional conditions at this time. So staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution, attach the staff report and approve a 36 a month renewal for the entertainment permit 22 dash 01. That's in my staff report. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Any questions? Anyone in the public that wants to address the council regarding the item? No one's in, here in person. Is there anyone online?
If you're on, please raise your hand.
If you're on, if you're on Zoom, you can just hit the little hand indicator to raise your hand. There's no one on Zoom.
Counsel? We're gonna close the public hearing. It's 7:16. I'll, if I don't hear motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Angela, please roll call.
Okay, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Council member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Galasa?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, another public, we're going to open up public hearing for adopt, adopt resolution number 2023 10 to approve the financing of the triple E CIC LP by the California Municipal Finance Authority and conduct public hearing under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended in connection with proposed issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, a joint exercise of powers authority and public entity listed in California in an amount not to exceed $40 million bonds to finance or refinance acquisition, construction and improvement and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located on 51397 Caesar Chavez Street, Coachella, California.
Hello again, Mayor Potem and council members, Selena Jimenez, grants manager. The item before you is, is for the, is for you to consider approving a, approving a resolution to authorize Chelsea Investment Corporation, the owners of Triple E Apartments to, to basically apply for tax, tax exempt financing with the California Municipal Finance Authority in the amount of $40 million to finance or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located at 51392 Caesar Chavez Street, Coachella, California. The C, the CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower and the city of Coachella will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. It is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the C, CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TFR, the code in the California Government Code, section 6500. And so here are some artistic renditions of Triple E Apartments. Triple E is a 108 unit, one to three bedroom, multifamily affordable housing development. It will feature four retail spaces on 2.8 acres at the northeast corner of Caesar Chavez Street and Baghdad Avenue. And it will also feature two community rooms and two tot lots as well as parking. And so my rec, our staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt the resolution before you approving the issuance of the bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purpose of satisfying the requirements of TFR, the code in California Government Code, section 6500. And this concludes the presentation. We do have a representative of Chelsea Investment Corporation here this evening to answer any questions you may have regarding the, the item before you.
Any questions from council? Anyone in the public? There's nobody here in person aside of the, aside of the applicant. Is there anyone online?
I don't see anyone online raising their hands.
Give it a few seconds. Anyone online that would like to address council regarding this public hearing item? Please raise your hand on Zoom. And we have no questions from council?
And this is just for them to be able to get the tax exempt and the portion of the loan would become tax exempt?
Yes.
So the apartments are still low income considered. It's just the, the funding comes from?
Yes, and they will have a covenant that requires them to remain affordable for 55 years.
All right, we'll close. There's no further comments and there's no public to address. We'll close the public hearing item at 7:20. Do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
All second. Angela, please do a roll call.
Yes, council member Delgado?
Yes.
Member Figueroa?
Aye.
Council member Virgen? Mayor Potem Galasa?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. The public may address the city council board corporation authority on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is in the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please leave me your comments to three minutes. Anyone here in public? We don't see anyone, anyone online?
I don't see anyone on Zoom and we did not receive any emails for public comment either.
All right, we'll move on to reports and requests. Council comments. We'll just start the council member Delgado.
I just have a few comments. One is that I had a great time at the state fair parades, my first time participating in. And I had a great time. We had a great turnout and Coachella Valley Unified really represented the city of Coachella. I have many family members that live in Indio and we're wondering, you know, where was Desert Sands Unified? Because all of our ACES programs came out as they usually do and they always do an outstanding job in all the different types of programs that they participate in. Additionally, I, I'm hoping and looking forward to that diff study session. I hope it's coming soon. And I also had, well, I thought that we had a great turnout and we had the community event in, in Coachalita. And I think it was a good indication of us to continue with these type of community events. Of course, public safety was always, you know, the top concern about, you know, many things that our residents were speaking of, whether it's some of our cars that are racing, you know, whether they want to see more presence. So I do hope that we have more of these community events and that we're touching up a bit more on public safety. There was a lot of lighting issues and concerns that they also highlighted, which I am in complete agreement with is that many of these older communities, and I've heard it before. So I'm still learning much about it myself, but that has a yellow lighting for the street lights. And that we see these newer neighborhoods being built with those LED white lights that really illuminate the streets much greater. So once you're going into these older communities, it looks much darker. And I do think that it's something that we need to revisit because we have many, many concerns, especially from our seniors and our families that have young kiddos about the concern about just not being able to see what's behind vehicles or when they're walking their dogs. They just can't see what's in front of them and there's always that fear. So I think that we should put together maybe an itinerary, a schedule of when we'll be having these type of community events and maybe focus on different communities in the city of Coachella and then advertise it. Because I think that what we heard from them is that it's not just the parks and recreation that they want to discuss, but many other topics. Thank you.
Dr. Figueroa?
Just wanna, I also participated in the day festival parade this president's day. But I also went on Saturday to the gentleman's alliance, one future Coachella Valley hosted. Was able to attend that. That was really great to see the young man from different age ranges, really, you know, had a really great motivational speaker to really kind of, want to be the, the, the young men of color and especially in our community and just young men in general. So that was a really great event that I attended as well. And I had my first act of control meeting on Valentine's Day and arranged that day. So that was a fun meeting as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you for.
You have a recommendation to our partners, no meetings of Valentine's Day for next year? So, councilor Virgen?
For me, so just to touch on the outreach event that we had at the park on Avenue 53. I think it was a really great event. It was a good opportunity to get out there with the community and just be there. Staff did a really good job putting everything together and, you know, you all looked very comfortable just talking to the community. So that was really nice. The only suggestion that I think I would have for outreach events is maybe considering the time. So when the events or the outreach events begin. I know for a lot of, you know, working families, maybe four o'clock or starting at four o'clock might be a little too early. So maybe considering starting some of those events like around six or, you know, sometime after working hours. But it was, it was a great turnout. Everybody looked like they were having a good time and just, you know, talking to everybody. So it was, it was really great to be out there. And my last comment is I was invited to go talk to the students at Toro Canyon Middle School. So that's coming up this week. It's going to be very interesting to be out there. I think it's one of my favorite things to do is go to the schools and, and talk to students because it reminds me of what it felt like when I was growing up and seeing people that looked like me, you know, go and, and kind of talk to you about their career and let you know in a way that, you know, it is possible that you are able to do things. And then also going back and mentoring and providing that, that, you know, making sure that they know there is a way to, to do that and to accomplish things. So really excited for that. That's all for me. Looking forward to the rest of the week and just, you know, being able to provide any kind of support that we can to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Virgen. I agree with you. I think one of the, I love the idea of being able to, you know, speak to students, speak to others. I remind Commissioner Bill Sanchez and this was my brother, when I was in high school, I remember that they went to, to my high school and talked about, I think Bill at the time was building a target in, the target in La Quinta. And I was like, damn, there's Mexicans that build targets, you know, like, I don't think I hadn't gone to a target in my life at that point. But it was, it was a cool thing, you know, like, and so it's important for them to know that they could be in these roles of, of, of creating change. Last week we had a multiple events in the city. So I thank you to our staff, our city manager and everyone for putting it together. I really enjoyed being at the, you know, our first type of like beaming ceremony with being able to sign it, join the firefighters and celebrating the progress in the fire station 79. And we look forward to one day, you know, seeing, being there at the grand opening. And so these, these benchmarks are important to tell our story and being able to share, prioritize our community. And same with the tot lot park meeting, you know, that, that park, you know, has, is, 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 is a need of a lot of support. And, you know, the count, the, the neighbors there talk about all the time. And so it's, it's, it's important that we invest and we modernize it so that communities like Coachalita and other communities don't feel forgotten. And one important thing to that, you know, when we were there, we took note of it too is that at one point, a lot of the council members lived on West of Avenue 50. And, and at that meeting, we realized that three of us actually live around Avenue 53. And so, you know, it's just been change of times. And so, you know, being able to share, share some of the wealth with those communities. And, and with that, the, the county fair was great. Look forward to, to seeing how we can, you know, it's all going. And it'll end this week. So go out, go out and also park in the parking lot. The funding that is, is given when you park at the parking lot, the fire, at, at the fire, fairgrounds instead of parking the streets. When you pay, it can be $10, $20, but it goes to scholarship money. A portion of it goes to scholarship money that Coachella Valley Rotary puts together. So it's a big fundraiser. It's Coachella Valley Rotary's high, biggest scholarship. They send our juniors in high school to, to Ryla, a cap every, every year. And they also provide scholarships to graduating seniors. One thing, you know, it's, it's super windy. So thanks to the staff for putting together the, and, and we're looking at rain, so the sandbags. One thing, Selena, maybe we can look into giving a report or advertising how much money we have left on, on the, on communities, on residents to be able to apply for grants for their house, their, their housing. A lot of my neighbors lost their shingles last night. I, I got home pretty late from work yesterday and I got scared because I saw shingles in my front yard. And I, and it was super windy, but I still grabbed my ladder, went up my house and I was so glad that, relieved that it was in my, my, my roof. But, but I saw my neighbor's roof and, and I, I saw some fly away and I said, it's better for me to get off this roof now before something hits me. But if we have any funding there left that we could advertise it, people are going to need support paying for a lot. You know, we don't understand roof and a lot of stuff that's being damaged through these weather implements. And any way that we could do to continue supporting and funding our families is going to be very important. With that, we, city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Potem. The only item I have to announce is a solstico Sunday starts next week, Sunday, March 5th. That, I hope everybody has a good day.
All right, meeting adjourned at 7:31.